Good evening. My name is Tony Frankelangia, Chair of the Berlin Running Board of Appeals. As indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this is an in-person meeting with remote access by Zoom. Zoom video and portable talk. Remote access provided on website for mission members, applicants, others, persons, participants. For those listening, I would ask that you mute your device or phone if you're able to do so, so that we don't get any background noise. When it's time for the legal speaker, I'll ask you to unmute your phone, identify yourself, and then take your turn speaking. Two very important reminders. Every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. This is being recorded. Secondly, you must not be, be careful not to speak over everyone who is listening to you when they say, "We have a good record." In regards to the meeting, the meeting has two parts. We have a new business, old and old business. Basically, what we do is we listen to the applications that are on the agenda during the new business portion of the meeting. And we listen to the application. They're asked to come up, state your name, provide any information you can with regards to the application, and provide any hardships, and so on and so forth. And then, once we so to speak, we actually have the question and answers during the first part of the meeting, during the new business portion of the meeting. We're closing the hearing on the application. We go into the old, into the old business portion of the meeting, and then we vote on the application during the first part of the meeting. One of the things that's very important is that we cannot introduce legal, we can't introduce any new information during the second part of the meeting. So if you have anything to say, you know, stated upfront, the first part of the meeting. If you have any questions, any concerns, any other comments, they should be all aired out during the first part of the meeting. But once we go to the second part of the meeting, all we have to do is vote. Usually, a vote of four in favor of passing the application. We have a vote of three to a petition which does not, does not pass. But with that said, I have your own questions. And I think, isn't there a, a vote, a vote of three for the licensing, the motor vehicle license?
Yeah, simple majority for motor vehicle licensing, although this one does have a non-conforming component. You want me to hold up on the roll call for one minute? Get settled? You should.
No, he'll be accountable. I'm just thinking out loud, if we have Hunter, I know you're there, and you're often, if Lenny comes in, and he's a full-fledged member here, you don't have to sit in if you don't want to. It's up to you.
Okay. You know what I might do? I might just listen in just a little bit to keep myself fresh and up to date, but not be part of voting.
Okay. Well, I said, "I'm sorry about that." I just realized that.
No worries. That makes more sense.
I guess we can go ahead and start, before we do a roll call. And I think Hunter's gonna sit in as, just to listen, but Lenny's gonna be in this slot here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chairman Frankelangia?
Here.
Mr. Tubbs?
Here.
Mr. Matson? Mr. Mizada?
Here.
Commissioner Whiteside asked to be excused. Ryan Zelic, alternate?
Here.
Hunter Mathena, alternate?
Here.
And when I stepped out, did I hear you say you were seating Ryan for the meeting? Lenny seated. Oh, right. Okay. Seating Ryan for Corey and Hunter seating Hunter. Okay.
First application, we go into that. ZB A 2022 dash oh four, 1406 Chandler Highway at 19 dash four, lot 15, lot 14A, Downline Auto LLC. If you're looking to go to a used location, approval for a used car dealer, downriver repair license, the Berlin Running Regulation of the 4C at 1406 Chandler Highway, R86.
So I'm just going to remind everyone that the speaker and camera up there, you can have your back to the camera, that's fine. But in order for those participating online, just project your voice, everyone, because the speaker's way up there.
Good work. CIO GAS, CIO GAS, for the applicant, A8 Valley Street in Bristol, Connecticut. As you saw from the application, the property is located at 1406 Chandler Highway. The applicant is seeking to open up an auto repair shop, emissions testing shop, and have some limited sales of used cars. The property has five bays currently on the site. It's just turned up, it's been used as a automotive gas station, repair station, so it's been used as a automotive property for, for many years. It has five bays. There are six lane parking spaces divided. The building will have an office space and a waiting area, a two-bay garage, and then a one-bay garage for emissions, and then in addition, a two-bay garage. So it's got five bays total. The applicant is looking mainly to do automotive repairs at the shop, and devote one of the bays for emissions testing. He would also like to do limited sales. You know, he has no issue with, you know, fancy can advertisers or have on-site his two cars at a time. But there are people that don't want to do repairs on their cars, and, you know, were offered to buy the cars, and go fix them up and turn around and sell them. But it will be on a very limited basis. He's more than happy to be working just two at a time. He doesn't want to do auto, auto sales, but sometimes it's just part of the nature of the beast when we're doing some automotive repairs. Some people can't afford the repairs. They ask him if he wants to purchase cars, and it's a way to make a few extra dollars if it fixes them already. He's a mechanic by trade, and this has been his primary life business. We're continuing to use the property as it's historically been used. Like I said, the building's already set up with five bays. And with an office, so except for some cosmetic repairs to the property, there will be no changes. And they do want to fix it up a little bit, make it look a little nicer than it currently is. It's got, you know, run out a little bit of use, but as far as the structure of the property, it is as it is. We're just looking to fix it up and unify it. This location is perfect for him, because it allows him to do that with minimal out-of-pocket costs, since it's already set up for an automotive repair shop. You won't have to do much of the major work. Last meeting, we handed out that we sent out unnecessary notices to all the surrounding neighbors. The building does not conform to existing zoning regulations, but this building predates the current zoning regulations that is preoccupied with it. So I don't think there's an issue there. He has made his application with DMV already. And once the committee approves this app, the commission approves this application, you will get the application through DMV sign. So we're just looking to take what was an existing business and give him a chance to own his own business. He's been in that camp for roughly 20 years, and it's time for him to venture on on his own, and open up his own business. And he's got some family members that will be working with him. So he's got the experience, knows venture now and looking to have his own business. And this is a perfect location, because it's approved in the sign.
Any questions? I have just one question. You're either going to be a dealer or a repairer. You're just voting, you're just moving the vote. If you're a dealer, you're a dealer. If you're a repairer, you're a repairer. Why? Because that's law. That's more of a vehicle law. There is no middle ground. If you're a repairer, if you're a dealer, you can repair. If you're a repairer, you can't sell.
He's going to apply for a dealer's license.
Change on here.
I'll make sure that, that whatever you approve is what I will make sure is on the license, which is why I do not go forward with it. Having a change, so that this commission could evaluate proposal as to find.
And if a motor vehicle purchase is listed as a private business, we'll be, we'll be.
I have a few comments when you're ready for staff coming in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this property, I think you're probably all aware, was Walitz Garage back for several decades. In 2005, received approval for whole garage to be a repair garage, as opposed to a repair, from what I understand. I couldn't find a license that told me exactly what they had, but the, the filed variance says a motor vehicle repair location. The currently, the site is non-conforming. As stated, the size of the lot is not conforming for the R86 zone, which it's located in. The size of the lot, the frontage did have a variance. The building is entirely in front of the setback, required setback for the zone, because the lot's fairly deep enough for the zone. Actually, I don't even think the lot is deep enough for zone. On the, and it was substantially a gravel lot with some perimeter. Foliage and growth around it, not anything that I would consider defined landscaping. However, there was greenery around the site. The current owner bought the, bought the property last year, and the, and a non-conforming use in the residential zone, otherwise be a single-family residential zone. The current owner bought the property last year, has done a substantial amount of work cleaning up the property, removing the gas tanks. Working with the DEP, is my understanding, is they're, if they're not signed off on by them, they're substantially more compliant than they were. And of course, that supersedes anything that they bring that into compliance for DEP. The parking was not on any plan I could find delineated, so this application, or rather, the new owner has paved a substantial part of the parking lot. I don't know if he finished the last leg of it, where he was working with DEP on the northern end of the site. We had instructed him, he couldn't pave that until he got that all finalized. But this application, because it was gravel with the asphalt, he can delineate out these parking spaces. So it's difficult for me to say how many parking spaces were with the five bays, but the current regulations require three parking spaces per bay for an auto use, which is 15 spaces. The applicant has laid out 14 spaces around basically what I'm called the perimeter of the, of the lot, and where we would generally find reasonably compliant. I am a little concerned about the, there being no setback along the southerly side, and you may have to work with the applicant as far as layout and parking goes, to make sure they can be compliant with, you know, like a five-foot offset from the property lines for, for grass strip around our planting strip. The three, two parking spaces in the center of the lot, as they'd be for, proposed for sales vehicles. I think this ought to make a determination, I don't have a statement, it would be consistent with what had been there or not. Some of you were on the board at that time, and have reviewed this property multiple times while homes have a garage. The whole application in 2005 also contained conditions of approval with regard to the hours of operation, and the number of cars, and the types of repairs that could be done. That is, or was at the time. And again, your determination is a non-conforming use, so the determination of the gas cleaning station seems to have been dismantled and removed. And I would think it's substantiated that the use is being abandoned, however, that would be a recall. So that's being abandoned, abandoned, or whether or not that will be something to consider as a change to a non-conforming southern repair garage to sales. I'm rambling.
It's less non-conformity.
Whether or not, they, they would make the determination as to whether or not it is equal or less non-conformity with adding sales to what had only been prepared. They would make that the determination. I might have been more clear. He's requesting a dealer, a, say, a dealer's license, and it had a repairer's license. So it's a determination of whether that is the same or equally, equal, or less non-conforming use for the, for to decide, and then whether or not the same conditions mean the parameters of that. I don't take exception to the number of parking spaces for the, as the zoning officer, I would not take exception to the layout of the perimeter parking spaces, being compliant at 14, when the current regulations would require 15 for the garage as those. That is substantially what a parking wants always. Okay, so maybe I just can't. Five plus six is 11, 12, 13, 14 around the perimeter, plus two in the center.
The big issue, the big issue that I see with the property is, is the layout of the property, and the ability to show cars. As I said, a dealer's license is a dealer's license. We can put all the caveats we want on it for two cars, but means.
You can't put any limitations on us.
So that's the issue that we have to decide here, whether we want dealership. Used car dealership, that area. It's not you, you may very well stay with two cars and sell more. But once a dealer's license approved on that property, it's a dealer's license approved by that property. If that's going to be an issue, his main focus is repairs. So if you have to go as a repairer, you would like to be able to sell cars, but that's going to be an issue, and that's the approval we will go with.
That's kind of what I was getting at, I asked earlier, like, I noticed size of this property. And repairing out of it, I don't think you're going to have a problem. Cars, selling cars out of it, it could end up. Same focus.
And as a reminder, because this is in a, in a residential zone, the, and my understanding from reading the record, the past record, is that there were limits put on the previous repairer's license, as it relates to hours of operation and some other items. I don't know if that is something, typically, you ask what hours somebody might be operating when they're coming in, or if they're using the previous other dealers. Then determine whether or not.
So I think, I think that's something that we have to come up with, is, what were the lawyer?
So the, in January 2005, for Walitz Garage, following conditions, no DOT repairs on site. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and closed on Sundays. No more than 14 vehicles outside at any given time. In addition, all vehicles stored outside will be legally registered.
Without gas.
We'll also just note for the record, they have delineated a location for a dumpster and shown it as having screening of fencing. That will have to come through my office for type of screening, but it is, it is shown there. I don't know that the, I don't think I'd such things, they certainly didn't operate with screening around it.
Showing is the one thing that will, will squeeze on the screen. That's why I asked. Yeah, this property here, there's no road toll. Towing a police rotation, like you said, emergency towing, or whatever that could be. You could have eight, 10 cars, or 12 cars, they were going to be picked up by, waiting for insurance, or whatever case, case, and sometimes a little more. It'll be after a little more. Well, that's something I think we should add, that we can definitely add to. I think that's easy.
I mean, car can, will, will be towed.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're just talking about gate.
No, not as towing operation out of that property.
You might want to ask the, to make comments.
Chris, do you have any comments, any questions?
No, it must, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'll make a motion to close the hearing. Is there anybody other? Yeah, I just asked for any comments, questions. One second. Motion made second, in my favor. Martin, can you do a roll?
I don't need to, but I think there's got a consensus for closing. About this side of the next section of the meeting.
If the application is ZB A 2022 dash six, 717 Berlin Turnpike. At 10-4, block 13, 14, Brian Silver, on behalf of Wine Merchants Berlin LLC. It is important to be sales and alcohol certification approval for a backstore delivery permit for Berlin Running Regulation 11B, the PFC one seven. By the F C of Berlin, saying, saying the application.
Attorney Brian Silver, on behalf of the applicant. I did.
Or you're.
All right. I'll do my best to address everyone here.
Just make sure that people can come in though, because it's an open meeting, that's all.
Gentlemen and the commissioner, ladies, my name is Attorney Brian Silver, law firm of Silver and Silver LLC. Britain, I'm here on behalf of the Wine Merchants Berlin LLC. The sole member is Carmen Singh, who's president and second for you today. He is looking to purchase the existing package store that's located at 717 Berlin Turnpike. It's currently known as Wine and Merchants. Here's a photo. I know you're familiar with the site. I just thought it's sort of been there for across seven years, I believe. The only change that's going to be made to the store once my client person, assuming that it applies with what you gentlemen and what you're looking for. And also, he's got to get the state department consumer protection issue, but the only change is going to be, instead of wine merchants, it's going to be wine merchants. That was a requirement, the deal when we are contracting to buy the, the business, apparently, the existing owner has another wine merchants in Connecticut. And we thought that that would, the trade is officially, we just put the word "thought" in front of it. But other than that, no change in hours, no change in, yeah. No change in hours, no change in operation, no change in hours, delivery, location of dumpster, everything's going to remain the same. Hopefully, it gets a little bit more busy. Mr. Singh would like to improve sales a bit, but other than that, nothing is going to change at all. Again, I believe, actually, I was here before even 2015, when we applied initially for the approval. It used to be Shell Equipment, Restaurant Supply Store. Lot of public involvement back then in 2015, because there was some concern about hours of delivery and the bay of the dumpster, that it would be trapped too hard. But I think everything's been compliance. And my client, this is going to be his first package store at this, obviously, but he's putting everything he has in place. Certainly, going to make it work, instead of apply with the neighbors, and hopefully be a pillar of the community and reach out to town of Berlin. So we would ask for the commission to approve the, like our firm's application. Again, this is just step one, he still needs to comply with the state department consumer protection, so there's still a lot of ways to go, but it's one of the first steps. I mean, was there any questions? It was going to be a VIP.
Yeah. That's the blocking.
The chefs had no controversy.
So was. Exactly.
Yeah, yes, that's the same language. Liquor control does heavily regulate what they're able to sell in that store, so there will be no without merchandise, it's going to only be wine and beer and spirits.
We hadn't gone as far already, we would have highly recommended change the name. And that wouldn't just.
It's a large sign, so I think the cost of actually replacing that entire sign is pretty extensive versus just a small person, though, which obviously, the applicant's going to need to comply with zoning and building requirement. It's still in full compliance with all the local regulations.
Can I ask a question? Do you expect to be replacing the sign face?
No, I, I want to speak for Mr. Singh, that's my job. Are you, you're only going to put the word "the" on top of it? That's the goal.
Okay, because we may need, we definitely will need to look at what is being changed, because I'm not sure that sign may have to come. Depending, the threshold for what needs to be brought further into compliance with it. I'm not hesitant with that one since, but we have several on the Berlin Turnpike that are currently compliant. When their sign faces get changed, their elimination is. When their sign pieces get changed, their elimination is. We'll talk. Yeah, that'll be for the zoning office as opposed for this one.
Maybe he's going to do it, so who knows?
I'm only kidding, it's okay.
From a zoning standpoint.
Right. The other comment, the other comment I have as a reminder is that the property, as you stated, does have site plan considerations and including things like dumpster tipping and things like that as far as hours go. So that not be altered by a new liquor permit. This is only for the liquor permit, not for the other site conditions for the site plan.
Acquire though, because I believe in 2015, the hours of operation.
No, not the hours of operations, hours of tipping, yes. Or whatever, or whatever other conditions may have been on that site plan. I just like to remind new owners and applicants that. That those are maintained, site planning conditions are maintained. No, that's not a. And I don't believe they had hours of operation. It was a matter of the dumpster.
I remember 4:00 a.m.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions of the applicant himself or his representative?
Any other questions from the folks out in cyberspace? Christine, any questions on your part?
Oh, I'm so technologically challenged, I apologize, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Christine. This is a different. This is the one down in the corner of school strip. Oh, 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 yeah, one that was built by a guy from Oxford, I think. I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I missed that one. Right.
Good evening, my shirt, my name is Michael Malazo, my address is 41 Trumbull Street in the United States of Connecticut. I represent the applicants in here requesting a license for the sale of alcoholic beverages at the location, though it's 1943 Berlin Turnpike at Berlin. Little bit of background, I'll also be purchasing the property at the same time. This group has been together for about 25 years, I've represented them in the Yance of Vermont, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. They sold liquor in restaurants, hotels, and liquor stores. I can tell you my 25 years with them, they've never had a problem. Very experienced in looking to build a kind of business, which I believe has some passion to owner at this point. I guess not, not all that well. Again, they're not looking to change anything that's currently there, although I did speak to zoning official, will be addressing some of the advertising issues that have been here with persons in the windows, we've been made aware of that.
All of the movements?
Yes.
He dusted my public.
Same name, same name?
Yes.
They have substantially temporary signs that some of them don't, aren't, in fact, very temporary, but that are continually across the entire front of the building. It appears as though the building may have been designed with some window areas that have been covered up. And they have signage across all those areas that shape wise, look as though they were defined as. And there are limited time for temporary signage. As a reminder, I will say if there is any change to any existing signage, as far as permanent signage goes, whether on the building or prestanding sign, that does need to come back in for building permits and zoning compliance regardless, even if it's only the face, it does require.
Understood.
I'm on.
Thank you, love.
Thank you.
I have no other questions, we're going to pull this.
Moving into regularness, if anyone is interested in returning to the room. Thank you for that patience.
My Auto LLC is requesting motor vehicle use as a location for a new car, we have a general repair license. This is going to be for a repair license only for Berlin's zoning regulation, though it are subject to 4C at 14th and 6 Chamberlain Highway near it, so it's not a property owned by Concorde Racing LLC. And I just mentioned that because this is going to be a repair, repair. With repair only and also that hours of operation that we used before and past.
So.
It has a meeting in January 2015, 2005, and Berlin's zoning board feels voted unanimously to review rapid patient or patients and more vehicle repairs under section 1583 of the zoning regulations for 14th and 6 Chamberlain Highway. Lot 14, 8 block 15, which are the following conditions, no DOT repairs on site. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, Sunday. And no more than 14 vehicles outside, then get additional, sort of outside, we really register. The only addition to have that is not be a company first. Other than that, that repairs license, just as repairs. I'm making motions to approve this application. A second. Any discussion?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. ZB 2022 dash 677 Berlin Turnpike, net 114 block 132, block 5. Brian Silver Esquire on behalf of Wine Merchants Berlin LLC is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages location. For a package store, a list permit for Berlin's zoning regulations, let it be BT1 up, practice of a DFC of Berlin LLC.
D wine merchants.
D wine. I'm making a motion to approve this guy. A second. A motion made second, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
As the last time. ZB 2022 dash 7, 1943 Berlin Turnpike, net 114 block 153, lot 9. Michael Malazo Esquire on behalf of Wine and Spirits requesting sale of alcoholic beverages location. Approval for a package store, a little permit for Berlin's zoning regulation, let it be in the BT1 zone, practice of high management LLC.
Aye.
That's true, okay.
Thank you very much, you guys have a great night, and thank you for your help.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all, and you all for the special meeting. I like one this way. Yeah, that wasn't bad. No. Sometimes I get so. You got to keep it in the pocket, right?
Thank you all very much for coordinating the special meeting, these would have hung and they were. We need a motion to adjourn, if that's what you're saying.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Bye, Hunter, bye, Christine.